Ah, Grand Rapids City Council. I've featured them in a couple of videos already and they were a big hit. Well, it's not so much the city council, but the endless stream of wokesters that show up to give the city council a piece of their mind. Hilarity, hilarity, and this one's no different. And we have the return of Captain Berserko. Don't miss this. Hello out there. I am trying to get through.
With his powerful brainwaves cradled in the warmth of reasoning, it's time for Johnny Walker Dread to straighten you out on a thing or two. Emanating all the way from exciting Las Vegas, Oklahoma, it's the Johnny Walker Dread Show.
Okay, so let me set the stage here. This is about the Patrick Leoya shooting, right? And this is before they actually charged the cop for the murder. But in the meantime, all of these community members are going to file in and tell the city council that they're not doing their job. Of course, the, uh, all the people that are showing up don't understand that it's not up to the city council in the first place. The state was investigating the incident and the state was going to give its recommendations to the district attorney who works for the county and not the city. But then again, what can you expect? When you have a community that seems to do a lot of. All right, here we go.
As a lifelong resident of Grand Rapids that currently lives in the Riverside Gardens neighborhood, I think this is an extraordinarily well-balanced budget.
Notice that he seems to be well groomed. He's wearing a nice shirt. Obviously, he's not going to be there complaining about Patrick Leoya. Um, he's actually somewhat reasonable. In fact, he's very reasonable. He's calm. He's going to present a persuasive argument.
I would like to point out that the only reason the city is in such a positive financial position in the aftermath of COVID is directly due to the responsible handling of the Grand Rapids finances, not only last year, but the year before that and the year before that. This budget solidly follows the precedent of responsible spending.
Now, he's saying nice things about the city council. We don't care about him. He's not going to be any fun at all. Oh, no, no, no. We need to find people who have their IQs detuned. And that's coming up really soon.
My name is Carrie Jones. I live in Grand Rapids. I spoke last week also.
Yeah, we heard you. You were in my video. You're an idiot.
I, uh, am a military veteran.
Again, as I said last time, I cannot believe this person was in our military. Hey, you soldiers, hang your head in shame. I'm only kidding. Well, sort of. Oh my God, she's been an accountant.
Um, I hold multiple degrees, which I obtained graduating summa cum laude.
Oh, are you applying for a job? If not, who cares?
With a 4.0.
Oh my.
I understand how to research and look up things and, and figure out what's going on in this city. And I've been watching the last eight years that I've lived here, what's happening. I've read through your budget. And while a lot of the numbers look really good that you want to invest, I also see the realities of what's happening.
You saw those in the numbers? Wow, that's pretty good.
Last week I sat here while you voted to add more money for GRPD to purchase more vehicles and for more surveillance. And then yesterday, I sat in Veterans Park at 6:00 PM by myself.
There's a real shock. Gee, no one would sit with you?
A female sitting at the fountain alone. Just for reference, I printed a map. In green are the streets around Veterans Park. In yellow are the sidewalks.
You could have used Google Maps. Oh, that would require using a computer. There's no way that they can see that from where they are. Why would you use yellow on white? They're all squinting like, what?
In Veterans Park, in red is the path that a GRPD SUV took on the sidewalk to drive next to me, sitting by myself in an attempt to intimidate to drive next to me.
Of course, what happened was that the SUV pulled up alongside her and they pointed guns at her because they're trying to intimidate her. Or they yelled expletives. Uh, we'll find out here in a moment what they did.
When there was nobody else in the park and absolutely no reason for them to be there on a sidewalk driving while two other GRPD vehicles were driving on Fulton toward Division at the same time.
Oh my God, there were two patrol cars in the same area. Oh, and by the way, what did they do? Nothing. They just drove by her. Oh boy.
No lights, no sirens, nothing going on.
Well, that's because there wasn't an emergency. If they had turned on their sirens and lights, you'd have complained about that.
But they drove on a sidewalk in the park right next to me.
And you captured this with your cell phone, right? Because everybody's got a cell phone that has video recording capabilities. And so you pulled out your cell phone and video recorded them, right? Like anybody else would do when they see the cops doing something they think is really terrible? Uh, no, she didn't. Okay.
Which, by the way, is a violation of the law. Michigan Administrative Code R 28.1448 Rule 448. Driving on the sidewalk prohibited. The driver of a vehicle shall not drive on or within any sidewalk area except at a driveway.
Yeah, police cars do have some exceptions to that. It still might be a violation, but you would want to go and file a complaint with the police department. And if that doesn't get you anywhere, then you go to the city council.
So I'd like to know why my tax dollars are paying for a GRPD vehicle to drive on a sidewalk past a lone woman sitting by herself in an attempt to intimidate.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Your time is up. Thank you.
Uh, how do you know that they didn't drive by just to check up on you? Make sure you're okay. You're sitting by yourself. You might be having a panic attack. You might be having a heart attack or something. Let's drive up there and see what she's up to. See if she's okay. You don't know that. And in fact, the whole idea of them trying to intimidate you is based on nothing. Nothing you said in a case they were trying to intimidate you. He's back. It's Berserko Man. Oh, this is gonna get good. He's in true form.
May I begin? My name is John Williamson. I've lived in Grand Rapids for 18 years. I have listened from the mountains. I am ashamed of all of you. I am ashamed of the blood on your hands that I am paying for. I am ashamed of Chief Winstrom. I am ashamed that my dollars are paying $90,000 to a man who executed a man in the street for not having the right license plate. Are you kidding me? Is this Grand Rapids? Is this Grand Rapids, Michigan? What year is it? Where is this investigation? Will it ever end? Because my dollars are in that man's pocket for shooting a man? I got two minutes left. For shooting a man, I'm still, you're still giving him my money, Chief? You're giving him my money, why?
You can address us, sir.
Man, he's gone off, but, uh, hang on a second. Uh, don't judge him too quickly.
Address us.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Commission, if you would consider speaking to the chief of police about the murder of Patrick Leoya, I would greatly appreciate it. I am here to talk about one thing. Patrick Leoya, Patrick Leoya, Patrick Leoya. Not the budget, not any thank yous for y'all. You ought to be ashamed that you have been so impotent to protect the most vulnerable. Patrick Leoya was a paragon of virtue. Patrick Leoya taught the kids to dance. What the fuck are we even doing here? Excuse me, I'm sorry about the language. It's my first time speaking at one of these meetings. I've had a lot on my chest, you know? The death of Patrick Leoya in my neighborhood, the southeast end of Grand Rapids. I live by that Walgreens. You know that Walgreens? That's where they killed him. Why don't we send a police out, one man at a time? Jeez Louise, you know, Jeez Louise. He was just, Patrick didn't reach, Patrick didn't, Patrick didn't do anything wrong! Nothing! Nothing wrong! And if you will not indict him now, charge him now, if this investiga, I investigated, it took me about that long, just like everybody else in this world. Patrick will never be forgotten and your role in the negligent care of this community will never be forgotten.
Yes, Patrick Leoya, paragon of virtue, who didn't do anything wrong.
Good evening. My name is Sam. I live in the city of Grand Rapids. Uh, President Jones, distinguished city commissioners, appointed staff.
Oh my God, this guy looks like he's had an actual job for the last 30, 40 years. And he's dressed up pretty nice. Uh, you know, he's not going to be woke. We gotta move on.
Hello, my name is Nate Johnson and I live in Grand Rapids, Michigan. Uh, I just wanted to thank you guys all for, uh, sharing that information with us earlier, a city manager. I wanted to focus on one particular point.
Now, he's dressed up pretty nicely. He's again, well groomed. He looks like he's been working, being productive, helping the city. It's going to be boring. We can't, we can't listen to this. We need woke. We need people who have not held a job down forever and who smoke too much.
Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Jenny and I don't reside in Grand Rapids, but I have owned a business and buildings in Grand Rapids for almost 40 years. Um, I want to thank you for just the unbelievable dedication that you've given this city. It's been just really remarkable for all.
By the way, I have a rule. If you don't live in Grand Rapids, you shouldn't be here. However, she does own businesses in Grand Rapids, so that's okay.
All of us to see your unbelievable work that you've done. I'm, I am so thankful for the dedication that you're putting into the homelessness situation. Um, I was one of the founding people of Liz's House in our city when we didn't have shelters for women. And I've been very active in God's Kitchen and a lot of the initiatives in the Hartside neighborhood. And, um, excuse me.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Allow her to speak.
Rational, she's reasoned. The people behind her, they can't stand that.
Um, I'm a resident here in the city of Grand Rapids. I also work here, um, in the city of Grand Rapids. And I just wanted to come and thank you guys for the energy and dedication that you're putting towards this budget.
Where are they getting these people? Can't believe it. There, there's no woke. We need woke. We need people who look like they haven't bathed in like the last month or so.
Hi, my name's Michael. I'm a resident and I also work downtown. Uh, we just moved here last year. Um.
Now take a look. Nicely dressed. Well coifed. You know that we're not going to get any action out of him. But that one on the right, you can tell it's gonna get good.
We've been a nearby resident, uh, came into the downtown area and quickly appreciated the number of constituencies that, uh.
At the risk of throwing my mother under the bus, I have to bring attention to the fact that she has been driving with an invalid plate and two broken taillights for the past seven months.
Okay. It starts, um, without throwing my mom under the bus. I've, I'm gonna turn my mom in. The police chief is sitting there and she's saying to everybody, uh, she's been driving around with a broken taillight. Oh man.
This is worse than the traffic violation Patrick was executed for. Not only has my mom not been pulled over, not received a citation, she certainly hasn't been murdered for it. Can anyone guess why? Cause my mother is a white woman. Thank you.
Wow, you're brilliant. Geez. So it begins.
Thank you. Speaker, want to be heard, please?
By the way, her mother can be expecting a ticket soon.
Provide your name and the city you live in.
I'm Monroe Suster and I, uh, live in Grand Rapids. Do you have children? Do any of you have daughters? I'm a daughter, a daughter that is fortunate enough to grow up with a dad. Christopher Scherr robbed Patrick Leoya's daughters of the opportunity to grow up with their dad. Patrick will never bring his girls to the father-daughter dance. He will never smile as he watches them blow the candles on their 16th birthday cake. He won't be there when they experience, uh, their first heartbreak. He will never walk his daughters down the aisle.
The hell kind of hairdo is that? It's like, looks like a stegosaurus or something.
Christopher Scherr stole more than Patrick's life. He took two little girls' dads. When you sit there and shake your heads at us and silence us.
No, the laugh at you is what they're doing, but okay.
That we are shaking our heads at you for doing nothing about it. Arrest Christopher Scherr justice for Patrick Leoya.
They can't arrest him. Jesus Christ. The district attorney has to level charges against him. Moron.
Thank you. Next person want to be heard?
My name is Danny White. I'd like to, um, tell y'all, thank y'all for the job that y'all is doing. It's, um, it's sad for certain, uh, stuff to happen in our city. But we do have, um, um, just do cause for everybody with their backs turned. I feel y'all pain, but we elected these folks up here to do their job.
If you could, yeah. Danny, if you could just address us?
Yeah. I'm just saying, it just, it just, I love what you're doing in the third ward. That's where I'm from. A lot of these people I've never saw before in my life. For something like this to come down here and people standing there to make us stand for something. We need to start at the beginning. Police is doing the best that they can. If somebody want to do something else, y'all can feel free. Y'all can feel free to come down there with me, my man with the dress on. You can come down.
My man with the dress on. Gee, I wonder what side of the coin he's on.
There and then you can help us stop a lot of other stuff. Don't come here today and do that.
Mr. White, yeah, address us, sir.
That's all I'm saying to them. That's, that's it. They have a hard job to do for some of us who can't continue to hold their laughter or, or talk. Let's help us police our own community and, and we won't have this. I'm talking to y'all too, though.
Okay.
I ain't shutting nobody down. I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Say what you want. I bet he has a job. Is the, uh, blood supposed to drain down into her brain or something like that? She's been holding up her hand there for the last five minutes.
Police is doing the best that they can. If somebody want to do something else, y'all can feel free. Y'all can feel free to come down there with me, my man with the dress on. You can come down there.
My man with the dress on. Oh man.
And then you can help us stop a lot of other stuff. Don't come here today and do that.
Mr. White, yeah.
And her hand goes back up again. What the hell is that?
Address us, sir.
That's all I'm saying to them. That's, that's it. They have a hard job to do for some of us who can't continue to hold their laughter or, or talk. Let's help us police our own community and, and we won't have this. I'm talking to y'all too, though. I ain't shutting nobody down. I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
By the way, he is the bravest man in there. Oh, they talk about how brave they are to get up in front of the microphone. He's the one that's brave.
Commissioners, uh, and the police that are in the room, I would love to say again, first of all, my name is Pastor Daniel Scott. I'm a resident of the city for over 30 years. I, uh, minister on the Hartside neighborhood, poorest neighbor.
What the hell is she having her hand up for?
Neighborhood of all of Grand Rapids. We've been there for 42 years. Uh, first of all, I want to thank you commissioners for, and the police for the wonderful job you're doing. I know it's not easy. I pray for you every day, not by name, but by groups.
If you could please let Mr. Scott speak.
And, um, I've had a chance to look at your budget and heard what you said today. And I'm here once again, as you know, I've spoken many times of sought to speak for the unborn in our city. Fellow Grand Rapids.
He says he wants to speak for the unborn and there's a person back there laughing. What the hell is wrong with people? Show some respect. He's a pastor.
Citizens, just as much as anyone else that's in this room. And, uh, part of the budget is for the homeless. And I see the homeless almost every day in my ministry. However, um, I would like to propose that some of these funds be used to assist mothers and fathers that maybe cannot afford to raise that unexpected child, that unwanted child that the mother may be carrying in her womb so that that child can live and flourish and grow. Use some of that funds to provide housing for them and other services, health.
What is she doing? What the hell is wrong with you? The only thing I can think of is.
Services and assistance. And, uh, after all, if we help those that are the most helpless, God will bless our whole city. Scripture says that. Scripture says, if you bless the poor, you will be blessed. So I would like to appeal to use some of these funds that I have paid taxes for as well for the very poor, those that don't have no voice like the unborn. And I'm sure God will bless you.
I'm gonna ask that you allow Mr. Scott to finish his statement. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Mr. Scott.
Yes. You talked about equity. How much more equity can you have for a life as, as the unborn?
As much as Patrick?
Yes, even Patrick, but the unborn as well.
She has to get in her digs about Patrick. Yeah, what about Patrick? Um, he's talking about a different topic. Uh, you're supposed to allow him the opportunity to speak.
All life matters. All life matters to the Lord Jesus Christ. Jesus Christ died for everyone, including Patrick, including everyone that's mocking me right now, including the unborn. Jesus Christ died for the whole world, you and I. And if we would all just call upon Him, He will save us and He will bless this city. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you.
Now, I'm not a particularly religious person, but what a nice man. You know, and he spelled out his ideas really clearly. You know what he's wanting? And he's persuasive. He could teach a lot of them in that meeting there on how to speak. And now we have nutso coming. She's been holding her hand up for the last five minutes. Oh, 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 I have no idea what's coming here, but we'll see.
Speaker.
Hello, my name is Emma. I'm sure you find my face familiar. Um, I want to start out with a quote by Maya Angelou.
Oh no, come on. Get a new gimmick. Enough of that crap. I mean, really? Seriously? It's a cliche. I want to start off my speech with a quote by Maya Angelou. Get a new shtick.
Um, "In the flush of love light, of love's light, we dare to be brave. And suddenly we see that love costs all we are and will ever be. Yet it is only love which sets us free."
Now, what possible relationship does that have to what you're gonna talk about?
Um, that's but on my heart and I feel this body has, um, been an utter failure to, uh, to uphold those values in that quote. Um, from what I've seen from this body, increasingly is fascism.
Okay, we got Hitler coming in. Sieg Heil, Sieg Heil. That didn't take long.
Um, and honestly, it's scaring me. Um, the level of censorship, um, that you.
In other words, you're not letting me say the F-bomb. I went over that in one of my previous videos. They just get really upset when you don't allow them to use the F-bomb.
You feel you're allowed to, to, and, and act on us. Um, and the sneaky way that you're writing the budget so it looks like you're taking money away from, um, the, the police department, but you're really not, um.
It's not that sneaky, okay? It's really easy to understand. The city's budget has grown by a certain amount. And so if you say that you're going to cut the police's budget by 1%, it's still quite possible that the police might get an actual increase. That's not all that sneaky.
So let's give a little context for those, several of my citizens who seem to not really grasp what happened when they spoke about the budget here. Um, so again, uh, the budget, the total budget is $597 million.
For a town of that size, yeah, that's about right.
Um, so taking that into account, anything on the budget that is less than $5 million is less than 1% of the budget. Um, the only other thing that I saw on the budget that is at least $5 million besides, um, the GRPD's budget is homelessness, housing and homelessness, which was only $5 million. So that's 1% of the budget. So if you're saying that's a huge increase, that is 1% of the budget. Um, compared to the GRPD budget, which is 34%. Um, so that's 34 times, um, and, and hundreds times other parts of the budget, but 34 times the housing part of the budget.
And that's probably very typical of every city in the country. Police departments almost always make up a very large percentage of the overall city's budget. It's because it's the one entity in the actual city that has a large number of employees. Most other organizations that require a large number of employees are run by the county. So, I mean, you could go to any city and you could find out that, yeah, of all of the entire city's budget, you know, 30 something percent is going to go to the police. There's obvious reasons for that. The mistake she makes is she throws out numbers, but she doesn't provide any sort of reference frame to compare to. So 34% is that high or low? I don't know. You'd have to look at other cities to find out. She never does any of this.
Um, 51% of that budget, um, is being used on patrol. So meaning about 15% of the total GR, uh, the total GR budget is being used to patrol its citizens.
Yeah, that's right, because that's what police do. I mean, 50% of the police's budget is on patrol, but at no point do you indicate whether that's too high or too low. You would have to go to other cities and find out what they spend. You'd also have to look at what else the police department spends its money on. So these numbers don't mean anything.
Um, I want that to sink in. Um, and then let's talk about the Office of Oversight and Public Accountability. So the total funds for this year, um, this coming up year, upcoming year is 1,700, approximately 1,700,000, which again is less than 1% of the total budget. Um, but of that budget alone, only six, about 700,000 is being used, um, outside of GRPD affiliation.
Okay, is that big or small? We have no way of knowing.
75K is used with, um, in partnership with GRPD, 100K for police training.
Your time is up.
And being used for police training.
Thank you.
Thank God. Can't just go up to the microphone and read off the numbers that everybody has access to, by the way. I mean, the, the budget is public. So what are you gaining? So what are you gaining? You know, like, well, we found out that they're spending $75,000 on training. Yeah, everybody knows that. They can read it themselves.
Thank you, Emma. Next person like to be heard?
How you doing, everybody? My name is Deandre Jones. I stay here in the city of GR. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say on Thursday, I went to the Kent County Commission and I asked the Kent County Commissioner, there were 17 commissioners there that I asked them to drop the charges of the protesters. I asked them to reach out to Christopher Becker and ask them to drop the charges for the protesters. I even talked to Robert S who said, ever since they've actually been charged with these charges, they have not went to the county commission, not one time, and asked the county commission to drop those charges. But for some reason, these people, these several activists are taking pictures from my personal Facebook page and cracking jokes when I was there to watch the chief of oath, when I was there to watch the chief of police take oath. Why are you guys taking pictures off of my personal Facebook and talking about me and sharing it and thinking that it's a joke?
Allow him to finish his, his three minutes.
I'm blocked off of Facebook.
Allow him to finish his three minutes.
I'll, I'll wait for my time. I'll wait for the time. I'll wait for my time.
He needs to just die.
What's that? Please go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
I'd, for one, and also I'm not dropping the charges on the girl who walked around the building where all of the protesters were and put her hands on me. I'm not dropping those charges. I never said a word to her, even when I was upstairs in the city commission, I never said a word.
What can possibly explain what we're seeing here?
To her, she escalated the situation and she started a situation. She put her hands on me. I have nothing to do with the police officers or anybody running into each other when they tried to stop her from getting locked up. Y'all should be, y'all should be, y'all should be getting a hold of her and making sure that y'all contain the people that y'all affiliate with, because I have nothing to do with those situations.
I said, allow him to finish his statement.
I'll wait for my time.
Allow him to finish his statement. Allow him to finish his statement.
One thing about it, he doesn't stammer much.
His three minutes? Allow him to finish his three minutes. Allow him to finish his three minutes. Thank you very much. Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Can I get my couple seconds back?
Mr. Jones, talk to us. Talk to us. Talk to us. Talk to us. Mr. Spicer, it's okay. Mr. Spicer, it's okay.
And you guys thought that city council meetings were boring.
It's okay. Mr. Jones, go ahead. Present to us.
I get my few seconds back, please.
Present to us. Please, go ahead. Present to us. Talk to us.
Also, I'm hosting another participatory budgeting process for the third ward. I'm also hosting one for the Hispanic community. I don't know a lick of Spanish, but I know that 5 to 6% of the Hispanic, Hispanic population has not even been involved with the process.
Five or 6% have not been involved in the process? So 94% have? Wow. That's a, an engagement level. I think that's, uh, that would set a national record.
I'm actually trying to create solutions for other people and I don't even understand the language, but I understand the barriers that we face in the community. So for all of these people that keep talking about me, all I keep actually doing is creating solutions.
Mr. Jones, talk to us.
All I keep doing is creating solutions. I'm not sitting here instigating problems. I'm not starting problems. I am literally trying to give back to the community the best way that I can. And every time I have a problem with somebody, I've never started a problem. Nobody can never name a time that I've attended a protest that I verbally tried to have a conversation. Not one person except for, can I see your megaphone? That's about the only thing I've asked somebody or can I speak? Anytime I've had a situation or a problem with somebody, they started it with me. And then when I happened to, when I handle it my way, then I'm the bad guy and I got at least five to 10 people on my head about it. All I'm asking is for the same respect that I do, because I am literally creating, I am literally creating, ready. They started it with me and then when I happened to, when I handle it my way, then I'm the bad guy and I got at least five to 10 people on my head about it. All I'm asking is for the same respect that I do, because I am literally creating, I am literally creating workshops and events to help the community through this process, so we can get past the traumatic times that are going on, because it all trickles down to economics.
Does he ever breathe? By the way, my apologies. That's not marijuana.
I'm not going to say anything to nobody else. I've been doing my work. Please stop taking pictures off my personal Facebook and trying to diss me, because y'all won't like how it really happened in the streets.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Okay, he's well dressed. He's real groomed. We can forget this dude.
Hello, um, my name is Lou. I'm from the third ward. Um, the speaker before me just stated that the police um, are meant.
Did you just get out of the shower?
And to serve what he intended to say, I think, was black and brown communities. However, that's not, they started as, policing started as slave patrols.
Oh, that's bullshit. God damn it. Quit repeating that myth.
So please disregard his opinion on that.
Uh, no, you have no right to say that.
Of the city's budget to the unhoused population? That's incredibly low compared to the 34% that you're choosing to give to GRPD, which GRPD only harasses and brutalizes the unhoused population.
Yeah, but the GRPD actually works unlike the homeless. You know, that's the difference. You're paying GRPD as employees, because they're actually providing a service to you. The homeless aren't providing any services at all. If anything, they're taking from you. And therefore, the fact that the PD is paid at a higher percentage than the homeless is probably true in every city in the entire US.
And we know this. The first public commenter brought up how GRPD ran through the grass or over the sidewalk. They do that regularly at Hartside Park at dusk to remove any of the unhoused neighbors who attempt to sleep there.
That's because you don't want them sleeping there, because you're trying to make your park an attractive place. And it's kind of hard when you have a whole lot of homeless sleeping there. They have homeless shelters. That's where they should be staying.
That's where our tax dollars are going. We just did a review of where that money comes from and it's ours and it's for us. And this is where the city is choosing to put it.
Oh, wait a minute. Uh, are you trying to tell me that the money that's paid out by the city council comes from the people? Oh, man. I hope the other cities don't find out about this scheme.
And that deeply needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person like to be heard?
Um, hi. I don't know what ward I live in, because it doesn't really matter. I've been a resident of Grand Rapids for over 30 years. Um, I want to talk first about the housing. That's a joke, okay?
That's a joke. Very persuasive. You're talking to the city council. I mean, come on.
My landlord just tried to illegally evict us so that he could up the rent by double, okay? And then I called almost 60 landlords, because wow, now I'm going to be homeless with my two kids, right? Because this landlord wants more money for absolutely no reason at all.
Yeah, uh, the reason is he wants more money. Like everybody.
Um, and each landlord told me they either didn't have anything or their two-bedroom apartments in Grand Rapids were 12 to $1,500 a month. Those were private landlords.
That's right. So why are you bringing this up to the city council?
When I called regular apartment complexes, they were the same and I had to make over three times the rent. I don't.
Gee, I wonder if maybe moving to a cheaper city would be the solution? Because obviously you're not working.
So there I was close to homelessness, but unfortunately I have an amazing group of people around me who.
Uh, fortunately, I have a whole bunch of friends around that I can sponge off of.
Pointed me in all the directions and, and saved the day, because now I get to keep my lease, because he was wrong in doing so in the first place. Another thing I want to talk about is.
Yay. So what concern is this of the city council? You had a problem with your private landlord. He was maybe breaking into some sort of municipal code or something, but you resolved it. So why are you going up to the city council and complaining about it? Focus.
Is the fact that you guys give more money to patrol than you do to train these officers?
Yeah, that's probably true in every city in the country.
No wonder they kill. No wonder they kill.
Yeah, we heard you the first time.
Right? Because they don't have enough training to patrol safely, right? They shouldn't be stalking us at all. When I broke down the $56 million budget for their 5% training or 5% patrolling, AKA stalking of black and brown people, and 2% for training, that equated to five, or sorry, $2.2 million for patrolling and 1.1 million, or I'm sorry, 2.8 for patrolling and 1.1 for training. Does that make sense to any of y'all?
I don't know. Without knowing what other cities are doing, it's kind of hard to tell. And besides, you might want to go to the police department and ask them. You know, why are you spending more time on patrolling than training? And they'll probably tell you, because patrolling is what we're hired to do. We're not hired to train. When we're in our training sessions, we can't protect the public during that time. This is not rocket science. You go to like any pilot, commercial pilot, 747 or whatever they're using nowadays. And guess what? They do have extensive training and it's really important that they're highly trained. But they still spend most of their time flying rather than training. That's true in every profession that I can think of. I don't know any that require more training than actual doing. Where do they get these people?
You can nod, shake, no, unbiased, you don't care, because your communities aren't stalked.
Uh, they're probably baffled, but okay.
Right? It's insane that you believe they need more, they need more money for patrolling than training. My wife went for dental assisting and got more training than all of your officers.
Uh, does she, as a dental assistant, spend more time training now than actually cleaning people's teeth? Really? Wow. Uh, poor dentist. He's, he's paying out a lot of money there.
Where does that make sense? Okay. More money for stalking than you do training? Which makes sense, because they only get 594 hours of training.
Which is too much, too little? Is that what? I have no idea. Again, without comparing to other police departments, who can tell?
They get shot with a taser that they're clearly scared to death of. All right, because then they execute people for having, allegedly having the already twice discharged taser. Just imagine had you trained him more. Just imagine had you trained him more.
Yeah, we heard you the first time.
Patrick Loya's daughters would have a dad. Come Father's Day, they'd be able to celebrate him.
Yeah, and some other poor people would probably be dead from him crashing into them, because he was drunk.
But because your officers got more money for patrolling than they did for training, you licensed them to kill.
Thank you.
So fuck you all.
Thank you. Your time is.
Geez, man. I mean, first of all, extraordinarily unpersuasive, but then she kills it by using the F-bomb at the end. So, so if she had persuaded anybody by that point, she totally undermined it at the very end. I'm tired of these idiots and she is an absolute moron. Again, where do they get these people?
Is up. Next person like to be heard?
My name is Kristen from the second ward. I'm here today to talk about bricks and.
She's here to talk about bricks.
At the ones that were in your yards, although your yards have my thoughts and prayers.
Their yards have your thoughts and prayers.
I am here to talk about the bricks that we put in the backpacks of our black community and we expect them to, we expect to save them.
Oh, no, not the metaphor shtick. Come on, knock it off. You're going up to the city council. You have a message you're trying to get across. Don't get cute. You don't need metaphors. All you need to do is get up there, explain your position, and then justify it. That's all you need to do. This crap doesn't cut it.
Don't talk back. Don't get angry. Say yes, ma'am. Say no, sir.
Oh, in other words, being polite? Gee, huh, what a burden.
Don't fight, even if they hit you first. Do your best. Do better than your best. Keep your hands out of your pockets. Don't look them in the eye. Don't challenge anyone. Don't put your manhood before your life. Just get home safe. Don't.
Don't act like an asshole. See, you could summarize everything you're saying there by saying that. Don't be an asshole. The police are on edge. They're concerned you might have a weapon. So don't put your hands down your pockets. And I've had police tell me that too. So don't do it. These are not bricks. This is just common sense. But to them, it's a huge burden. Oh, my God. You gotta be polite. Oh, no. They probably don't want us to use those F-bombs that we love so much. I mean, come on. You know, I think perspective is an issue here. These people lack perspective. Have these members of the community you're so concerned about, go work in the coal mines for a while. Then they'll come back and think, gee, you know, being polite and, you know, not sticking my hands in my pockets and not making the officer think that I might kill him, maybe that isn't so bad, because I worked for a whole summer in the mines and, in the mines and they seem to have it much, much, much harder. This is the reason why I think that we should have military junior ROTC in high school for every kid in the country. Let's give them some perspective.